I call a June 24th meeting of the Nashville Planning Board to order. I recognize the form. First order of business is we'll look at the minutes from our last meeting. Minutes have been distributed. The minutes for the April 22th meeting. I was not present. Jack, did you share that meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'll revise on y'all. Test the minutes correctness. Minutes are correct. Oh, entertaining motion to accept him. Salute. Do you all have a second?
My second now.
Second to accept minutes as published. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Minutes are accepted. Sean?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Our next order of business and Mr. Sandy is on the way. He truly apologizes. We told him six o'clock with planning board and town council seven and sometimes those times still get confused up with some some of our applicants. But just to get everything started off, this will be a public hearing tonight for a text amendment that Mr. Sandy has requested for the allowance of shipping containers in the town of Nashville. Mr. Sandy has did an outstanding job. I gave him a canvas, a blueprint, and he kind of went for what I gave him and went a different direction, writing what he thought would be such as his text amendment. But as you guys know tonight, it's a public hearing. You'll get staff overview, presentation about the application, others and support, comments by the general public or anybody that opposes or against this request. Those questions can be to the board and also the board will have comments to be able to vote tonight or the board can vote to table this to another month and give y'all another month to continue to work on it and look at it. Just to go with Mr. Sandy's application. He applied for this text amendment back on June the 3rd, 2025. He submitted to the town hall on June the 4th, 2025. We told Mr. Sandy if he got in during that timeframe, he would make the June 24th cutoff of planning board. So he did. We did publish this notice in the June 11, 18th graphic for the planning board. Being that town council will only have one daytime meeting in the month of July and not night one. We told Mr. Sandy that we would have to wait to August to hear this in nighttime meeting. As we told the planning board last time, rezoning text amendments, we just feel like they should be done at nighttime meetings to make sure that all the citizens can be apt when to come out to the meeting and not want to contest or say approval for the rezoning. So we defined it. Mr. Sandy has wrote down three. I'm trying to wait till he gets here, Mr. Chairman, to see which one. If he wants to go to the one that will sit to you guys in your packet or if he wants to go with the one that he sent last night around midnight 12:30 that he revised from the revision that was emailed out to you guys today and also.
We have that.
Yes, sir. We have that copy with you right in front of y'all each day.
I want to ask you just a minute. We postponed for a minute, but.
Yes, sir.
I have two. Can you explain the third one? Where's the third one?
Okay.
Is that one? That one's in our packet?
Yes, sir. The one in your packet is what we had comprised about a week ago. Mr. Sandy said he was okay without one. Last night, here he comes. All right. Last night, I did a good job, Sean. I got you. Last night, Mr. Sandy sent another one, which is a revision to what was sent out to you guys in your packet. Mr. Sandy, while you're here, let me ask this question to make it easy on the planning board.
Sure.
You would like to go forward with the one that we did not give them in the packet, but the one you sent last night correctly? So the one you got in your packet, you could just go ahead and put that to the side. We will not be using that one. So you will be using the one that was emailed out today?
Is it the short one or long?
It's the short one. End of line.
So are we looking at three page? Or are we looking at the ones we got? Are we looking at the two, three, four pages?
Three page. It should be one. One, two, three, four page and a three page one.
And what is the difference, Sean?
One, the four page one is the one that Mr. Sandy submitted last night. The three page one is the one that was recommended by TRC after their review.
The three pages from the TRC, the four page one that Sandy sent last night?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
If you want to, I'll go ahead and get started and then Chris, I'll yield over to you, sir. And then we can go with all recommendations. I'm with the public hearing. I believe nobody's here. But as we stated, Mr. Sandy submitted this back on June 3rd to the town council for the text amendment to make tonight's meeting. We published it the June 11, 18th Nashville graphic, again, it'll publish on July 24th and 31st for the town council meeting pending that it does make approval to go to town council. If not, then we'll pull that. We table it and wait it still table to go into August and July. Then what we do is pull those dates off and then put on another date for probably in September, per September for town council. We define storage container. It's not defined in our ordinance. So a storage container is a standardized large metal box typically made of durable steel. And for the sake of time, I will not read everything word by word. I know you've done your due diligence and ran through this very thoroughly. We gave it dimensions such as a 20 by 40 feet in length. Although variations exist depending on specific uses cases. We gave it a purpose used to securely store items or transport goods over long distances by ship, rail and truck. And we also put a large standardized metal container used for storage or transportation goods typically measure eight feet in width with a range of nine to six feet in inches, varying by length and per unit. Box truck bodies and tractor trailer box, tractor trailer box bodies are not shipping containers. You look right there, section 1811A number seven is what is in our zone ordinance for temporary use storage. We're looking at adding 1811A with a subtitle B for shipping containers, temporary use of storage units and shipping containers. And if you turn over now to page number three that Mr. Sandy provided. And let me make sure mine's still in order.
Still on the three page, correct?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. It'll be page three. It would say section four regulation for residential zoning districts?
I don't have that. Not on the three page.
Mine may be out of order by now. Hold on.
I don't see that either.
It should be this one right here. Mine may be out of order. This will be the first page.
The third page is approval in the night.
Okay, that's the other one that we got.
It's the three page.
You need a four page one.
Okay. Four page. Which one he sent last night?
Yes, sir. Okay. So it should start off with.
Section. Third page is section six.
No, this is the right one. Right. This is the one. That's the one that was in your packet.
That's right.
That's the one you can.
No, this one's in my packet. What?
There you go. Okay, y'all. I've got so many creases. God, hold on. Let me get over. I got mine's over here.
Which one?
Page three. Page three.
Here we go.
What section?
It's the one. That's why I apologize, board. I put out the wrong one. I put to the side the wrong one. Your first one should start with section one purpose with red.
Okay.
Right here.
Which one were you referring to?
The four page one right on the red last. That's the one you threw. That's the one you got. That's the one that I'm seeing there.
What's next, Mr.?
It's right here.
That's one he submitted last night.
That's the one he submitted. It's four page one.
What section are we looking at?
We start with section one purpose.
First page. So let me ask you this. Why are we starting with that instead of TRC when I just mentioned that?
This is the one he submitted. So we're going to go with his first.
Okay.
All right.
And this is a skeleton.
Hold on. So Chris, Sean, where we at?
Section number one purpose.
Hold on, hold on just a minute. We have another public order here.
So Chris says our intention to take inspiration from Nashville NC businesses and register with the Pro Act Plan and guide our community to success and prosperity. Pretty much we gave a purpose or correspondence. Section 1811A is the nuts and bolts. That's what we already have for a in our ordinance. So we're going to go right here with definition of shipping container. Section number two, 1823 definition. A shipping container is a large standardized metal container used for storage or secure transportation of goods all over the world. These units typically measure eight feet in width and up to nine feet to six feet inches in height, varying in length. These metal units are weather resistant, secure and very durable. These steel containers can be modified for construction, storage units, office, commercial buildings or homes. Box truck bodies and tractor trailer body bodies, box bodies are not shipping containers. Therefore, are not allowed in a short term or nor a long term storage or accessible building. We define other things for the definitions. We already have a definition for a special use permit. Of course, we've added that in as a board footnote. It's granted by the board of adjustments. Construction building permits. The board knows that's the permission you get from Dash County zoning from the town. We define accessory building. Accessory building in our store, in our definition and temporary storage unit, we added that. Any non-permanent temporary enclosed or open structure built for safety, security and protection of materials, tubes, equipment, supplies, et cetera, only living in such structure is prohibited. Living in such structure is prohibited. Section three goes with application for requirements. Pretty much anything you would do for a zoning permit if you were coming in to apply for a accessory building, apply for a change of use, submit a site plan. It's reviewed by myself with Thomas Seeng. If it meets the town's ordinance for approval, we go ahead and release the zoning permit. You pay the fee and we send you to Nash County Building Inspectors for your next step. Section four, regulation of residential zoning district. Permit requirements. Shipping containers are not permitted by default in residential business zoning districts unless permitted by a special use permit obtained from the town of Nashville Board of Adjustments or a building permit from a local county planning zoning department. So of course, if you want to have it in a residential, they are saying you have to come before the Board of Adjustments. I believe four of the members on the board sit on the Board of Adjustments. So you have to come for you guys for a special use permit approval. Application for special use permit, a property on which to place a shipping container on their residential lot must submit application to the Board of Adjustment. The application will include a site plan, justification for use, proposed duration and any other information requested by the Board of Adjustment or by the application. Section number C, application for building permit residential. We won't get too much into doubt when it's in the, it was added in the orders, but that's when you go over there to Kevin Marks in his department. They will look at it. They just going to want to see that you guys comply with the zoning with the town before they start to put their eyes on. So when we send them over there, that'd be more there, more discovered work in that parameter. But we have a D, duration residential, short term and long term. Short term storage temporary. Shipping containers are permitted for a maximum duration of 180 days following the issuance of the special use permit for short term residential storage use. B, a full expiration of the permit period. The shipping container must be removed unless renewal is granted. A one-time extension not exceeding 90 additional days may be granted by the plan director or plan directors designated upon written request and demonstration of rational and good cause. Long term storage. Shipping containers must be used for commercial business construction regulated by local building codes and zoning. Shipping containers used as business commercial, long term storage and or accessory buildings must follow approval process of the town of Nashville and Nash County Permits Code set back to zoning. Shipping containers approved for business commercial, long term storage and or accessory buildings must be maintained in a condition equal to the town Nashville regulation and guidelines for said business commercial properties. Regulation for non-residential zoning district. This is our BI, not BI, B1, O9, I1. It's been a long day today. Permit use mandatory. Shipping containers accessory builds are not permitted by default in residential or business zoning district unless permitted by a special use permit obtained from the town Nashville Board of Adjustments or building permit from the town of Nashville and county planning code and zoning department. Terms of use, pretty much same thing. Setbacks, high area regulation. Containers used for long term storage or accessory must be maintained. Shipping containers must be free from harboring a place of criminal activity, vermin, vermin and other means that would cause a public nuisance. Now we get into section six, and I think this is the nuts and bolts of where the ordinance goes. Short term temporary. A shipping container may be used in town of Nashville business zone to receive and prepare for shipment of goods and materials. Said business must notify the town Nashville NC plan directors office by email or in person all containers identification numbers upon arrival and departure. Business commercial status has 14 business days to receive and ship. Shipping containers short term use shall be permitted on a property for a maximum period of 90 consecutive days from the date of the permit issuance for projects, constructions and or renovations. A one-time extension, same thing we got. It's no reason to have it done to repeat it. But same thing we got over, a one-time extension, nine days can be granted by the plan director. Here's where there's a need. After expiration of the approved time period, shipping container must be removed from the property within 60 calendar days. This replaces what we have with storage units that if you get one during a construction process, after you get CO or the job is completed, you have six days to get the product off the site. Long term, shipping containers may be used for residential construction as regulated by all local building codes and zoning. Shipping containers used as business commercial, long term storage and or accessory builds must follow approval process of the town Nashville and Nash County Permits Code set back to zoning. Shipping containers approved for business commercial, long term storage and or accessory builds must be maintained in condition equal to the town of Nashville regulation guidelines for said residences. Shipping containers approved for business commercial, long term storage and or accessory builds must be painted to match the color scheme of said residence. Section seven, it deals with setbacks and placement standards. Shipping containers must comply with essential building setback requirements assessed by town Nashville zoning ordinance for applicable zoning districts. And that applies for all districts, five feet separated from any existing building or any existing structure on the property. You have a shed. And six feet from the side and rear property lines. Containers must be stacked and self unauthorized shipping containers sales and service yard or design engineered commercial business structures. Containers should not be placed in a manner that disrupts emergency access, public right of ways or easements. Section eight, your general conditions, non-residential properties. Containers shall be maintained in a good structural, physical condition. Containers used on an applicant structure site must be removed within 60 calendar days of the project completion or the CO issuance. Section number nine deals with shipping containers, sales and service businesses. Shipping containers sales and service businesses shall operate as any other business in any of the Nashville NC business districts. So that will pretty much be B1, O9, I1. We would not recommend it in the B2 downtown district because everything has that zero setback. Side lot line was adjoining. So we would just say B1, I1 and O9. Shipping containers are to be treated as retail wholesale, display inventory and shipping container sales and service businesses. Shipping containers inventory must adhere to all property setbacks per local town Nashville codes. Shipping containers sales, service business shall not be allowed in residential districts of Nashville. Shipping containers sales and service may operate in any business district, O9, B1, I1 that can accommodate inventory setback, ingress, egress regulations. Shipping containers sales and service may operate in any business district that's accommodate inventory setbacks, ingress, egress regulation. Shipping containers sales, display or inventory shall not be blocked, reasonable view of any other business franchise. Section number 10, emergency provisional use of shipping containers. This was what was added in also from the original one you received last week in your packets. In the event of emergency events such as a fire, flood, act of god, natural disaster, vandalism, et cetera, residential or business property must be acquired shipping container for a short term temporary use without permit until emergency is resolved. Residential business owners must acquire short term temporary permits within a 14 day of incident. Section number 11 will be the enforcement penalties. That'll be the part where we have the right to go in and enforce the penalty and fines if someone brings one to town without getting the special use permit by the Board of Adjustment or not having clause for section 10, the emergency provisional use. It will give Thomas Seeng and myself the opportunity to go out and send out a letter for a notice of zoning violation. And section 12 is your servability. Mr. Chairman. I have just kind of briefly, I went over this entire ordinance, but Mr. Sandy is here to talk with the board about his ordinance. I would encourage you to, if you have any question for me first, to ask those questions. We go with the public hearing, then we can ask those questions if you have anything for staff. If not, we can turn it over to Mr. Sandy, who is here to entertain any question that you or the board may have on the proposed ordinance that he has written. Then we will come back after the public hearing is closed and go over any staff recommendations, sir.
And one of these is the TRC recommendation, correct?
Yes, sir. Once we go through Mr. Sandy, then after we do the public hearing, go through Mr. Sandy, we'll go through TRC recommendation once, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. If y'all have any questions from the board for staff, we are here to ask. If not, I will, and Mr. Chairman, I will get you to open up the public hearing and we will turn it over to Mr. Sandy.
We'll open the meeting to public comment this time. Sandy, if you would, state your name and address for the board.
Christopher Sandy. Own Good Rights Supply, 720 South Body Street in Nashville. Um, this is a skeleton. The, it's a, I know we're pioneering the way through with such a thing as this. A lot of the communities that we contacted and we contacted several have nothing. Or they're stumbling around with some different things and bits and pieces or redundancies. And I've talked to Rocket Mountain, Rocket Mountain, um, they have nothing. Basically to address us. And so the problems presented, we're trying to do something about it. We've got a lot of highlights put into it. And you know, I own the business that sells shipping packs. And so of course I've got vested interest in this, but the reason I do that is because of the need. I have, there's a need. People that have come to me repeatedly on different levels that need this, and that's why I'm doing it. I would do it if it wasn't the need. And it's been received very well and it's grown. And one example is that I started, I gave some of this, a petition that has been signed. And this was just a couple of days. And I had almost 100% of signings, the business owners, property owners that say, hey, yeah, we need this. We need this. We need to be able to expand our business or operate our business. It's important. It's an important factor in the world we're in too. On the residential side. And passing around, it's coming. The building houses, I was expecting. It's building material like sticks and bricks. It's just something that people are doing now. Personally, I try to take the approach and the look at this thing. It's not all about, look, I feel because I personally don't like circle houses. But some people like this. And so we have to have the door open to encourage and address it so we're not stumbling around. And I think Randy asked me one, one meeting as we had, was Washington Nashville will be the first to handle this. Well, Nashville's the first. Nashville, I'm 13 in this country. Will I not be the first to handle this? And we not scared, right? Um, so. I've got, I'm looking through what we looked at. There's a couple of little things that need to be tweaked so it's co-centric within it. But that's the nuts and bolts of it. You know, these issues come up and if we're going to address it, we got to address it. We got to address it all. If we're not going to address it, like so many other communities, it leaves it open for interpretation. And then what we did, I mean, you know, that can be abused or it can be used. So, um, I hope I've made a dent in this and given something to build upon and can work with. Any questions or anything that I missed? So we tried to address commercial. We tried to address a sales center like I am. We tried to address residential and also we tried to address these units as short term and permanent stores. And so, and I'll take, uh, not just because of itself, but a shipping container in these properties is one of the most sturdy structures that you can have. And you know, they're less tentative, we fall apart and not basically going to run. Um, and then, you know, we had issues with people with their houses and the buildings and just already going forward to make them fix it. Uh, less of a tendency to have to deal with that too. And trying to address the terms people might have like the residential thing as a storage unit or an accessory building. Paint that house, you know? Anything else? Any questions, Mr.?
I'm going to speak on this list of signatures and names of signatures. I recognize most all of them. And almost all of them that I see that I know are qualified business people that's been here of all time.
You know, questions? If not, we'll close the public comment and then we'll have an address.
Chairman, I mean, you know, there is a need for shipping containers in any community. Obviously, it goes without saying, industrial. We got Walmart is a large retailer. They ship and receive merchandise in a shipping container. They don't necessarily use it for storage, but they use it for shipping. So I feel we need some regulations on it. Chris, what I don't really, you know, you got section seven in yours, which addresses the company like yours that sells and leases shipping containers. And the way you have it here is that sales and display would be allowed in any business district provided you make the setbacks. You know, in most, let's, for example, where they are right now on the custom hot rods. So the setback there is approximately what, 40 feet back?
Yes, sir.
So they'd still be in the, in the front yard. Where we did find regulation from other towns for the having of shipping containers, both for shipping and receiving and use of storage, whether it's temporary or permanent, is they have to be behind the main building or alongside. They can't be any further than the front. So.
And my thing would be like the storage building, a car on Potted Plant is for sale. It's an item that's for sale. It's not being used for storage. It's not, it's, um, because I mean, we're looking at like the bases that the storage building sitting down there out front. It's just an item for sale.
Yeah. Tim Matthews had a lot on Church Street for a number of years. It had a bunch of storage buildings. And, uh, but you know, they weren't shipping containers. They were, they were accessory buildings. Anyway, I just wanted to point that out. So, um, that's all I have.
You know, while we're closing here, I think we're going to come back to you guys.
I got one.
Okay.
I have some questions. Okay. Nancy Westbreak, Nashville Graphic. Under section five, regulations for non-residential zoning. B, terms of use. Number three, shipping containers must be free from harboring a place for criminal activity, vermin or other means. Does that mean that the shipping containers would have to be locked? Kept locked?
You have to draw that. Draw that as that.
We just did not want somebody to have a shipping container in the yard. And then let's say the house is under construction. So we would encourage them, we can't enforce it a lot, but we were strongly encouraged them that if you're doing a construction job too locked at the end of the day. So it can't be a place to harbor criminals. They go in and do ungodly, same things. The kids get in there and.
It comes to closing.
Yeah, that's why it comes to clubhouse and kids and kids.
Well, then you might want to, if you're going to adopt this, you might want to clarify, add that, that it means locked. You know, they or else critters and all sorts of kids could get in there. And then under section six, B, long term. What technically, I see time guidelines for short term. I don't see anything for long term. What is the statute of limitations on, or if that's what you call it, for long term? Is it like a year, two years? That's not specified.
It could be permanent.
Permanent?
Look, anything that's not short term.
So long term equals permanent?
Yeah.
Is that what you're saying?
So, so long term is, is shown through those pictures you just passed around. Have you seen those? Okay.
So it means permanent, they're forever?
Yeah.
It could be like.
Yeah, they're, they're built into the structure, the other structure.
So that's why the thing is added about it has to be painted to match a color scheme. Because it's basically a part of the building, sort of, right?
You got to look at it close to realize it's a shipping container. You got, you got to look at it close to realize it's a shipping container.
Okay, that's all.
Anybody else? We're gonna close the talk here at this time then. Sean?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
So, let's discuss what the TRC has come back with.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. We sent the original ordinance that you have to the TRC for their monthly meeting.
That's the free page.
That's the free page when it came in your package. We sent that one to them.
Wow.
And the TRC recommended to deny that text amendment at the right time. They felt like the request, his request would not be beneficial over and along with the town and that would be a claim, it's a comprehensive plan to deny it. We sent the request that Mr. Sandy made revenues last night to the TRC at that time in the day. We heard back from the TRC committee. Their decision was to also deny this text amendment. Request, his request will not be beneficial over and along with the town and that would be a claim, it's a comprehensive plan. But the TRC did recognize that Mr. Sandy did have a proper standing for, there's a need for shipping containers in that industrial B1O and I business, because those are the people that are using the most, the brick and freight and stuff like that. So, what the TRC said, they would recommend that shipping containers be used for storage and allowed as a permanent use in the B1O and I, I1 zoning district, as long as they meet the requirements of the town ordinance for accessory uses setbacks for the accessory building, Section 1854, as Mr. Sandy presented, and submit a site plan to the planning department for review. They also added another condition, property owners and/or tenants must have proper screening around the shipping container, that can be vegetation, a fence, or an existing building around it, screen and buffering from the neighboring sites. So, the TRC said that they feel like there is a need to address the shipping containers, because as Mr. Sandy has stated, industrial, O and I B1, the Wal-Marts, the places that got rail access, that have the industrial businesses, they are using shipping containers to bring them in and out, the haul material and store materials. They just felt that it would be very suited if we worked it this way. That would also take out the special use permit for the Board of Adjustments. It would just come into the town as if you were applying for, if somebody with a B1 business was applying to have an accessory building in the, in the business. And if you look at the definitions, they also redefine the definitions. So, a shipping container used for storage is a repurpose, on page 2 of your packet behind the general portion, right here. It says, "A repurpose industrial shipping container used primarily for secure or on-site storage of goods and materials." Here are its key attributes. Typically made of durable steel, providing robust protection against weather and unauthorized access. Commonly available in standard lengths such as 20 feet and 40 feet, with an eight-foot width and either eight and a half, nine-foot height, though custom sizes may be available. So, that still gives them a chance, because doesn't make these width and height reductions they, they can't get a custom one available that we can fly with. Equipped with doors on one end or both for easy access to store items. Weatherproof and watertight to protect cocks from environmental conditions. Ventilation options may be added to prevent moisture buildup. Application used for storing tools, equipment, inventory, and personal belongings. Volume for construction sites, retail inventory overflow, agriculture for produce storage, and residential applications. The mobility, while designed to be stationary during use, containers, and I'm gonna read the original wording, and then we'll come back to a new wording. Containers can be transported by truck or rail, making them flexible for relocation as needed, but I've been told, let's rewrite that to say during use, containers designated to be by truck or rail, making them flexible for relocation as needed. Also, we still kept in the one amendment that Mr. Sandy had.
Designed to be.
Yes, or designed to be, excuse me, designed to be transported by truck or rail, making them flexible for relocation as needed. We also did keep in the one condition that we believe Mr. Sandy did exactly right on. Box truck bodies, door, and/or tractor-trailer box bodies are not shipping containers.
We're referring to those that have, that have had their wheels removed?
Yes, sir, that is it. They had the wheels removed, or like one I seen about a week ago when I was camping through another town. They took the, uh, front end of the cab off and just had the box out there. That is not a shipping container.
Used to be one on Barn Street until about two years ago. So, the, under mobility, everybody's following there, that now reads, "While designed to be stationary during use, containers designed to be transported by truck rail or making flexible location as needed," that goes back to basically finding a content or an intermodal type.
Yes, sir.
So, box truck bodies and tractor trailer box bodies are not shipping containers. We didn't say anything about them being mobile, or anything, you just said, because a box for bodies, if you want to see your wheels on, click to be moved.
Right.
So, basically, what we're talking about, nothing but the containers like you see stacked ten high on these big ocean vessels coming along from, uh, Charleston, South Carolina, Norfolk, and wherever else.
Yes, sir.
That's it.
Is that the ones down the shipyard?
I certainly don't like those in residential, painted orange. Well, if you see those pictures, I don't know, that's become a housing. Well, that's it, but, but, but like that, you can hardly tell it's a, a box container. I agree, but that, that's not a storage device. That's, that's like making a residential commercial office.
And when they do that, when they convert them from storage units to a building, then they have to follow building codes.
Right, yeah. And I'm fine with that, because then the building code is become paramount.
Yeah.
Um, let me ask a secondary issue, we'll progress for a second. The ones he has now with the signs on, where's our signards applied at?
That will be a temporary banner. We did send out a notice of violation to Mr. Sandy, Thomas Singh sent one out. That's kind of what got the wheels started with, the change of the ordinance and stuff. But that will consider to be a temporary sign banner, because he's got a temporary banner up there. We told him, once we get all this addressed, then we can tackle that part of what he, the best he'll be.
So, the one he submitted, talking about the full page, that definitely puts him in residential areas, correct?
Correct, yes, sir.
The TRC one definitely prevents him being residential.
Yes, sir, the TRC one just only puts him B1, I1, O and I.
So, can I check, is that gonna discriminate between what kind of building you can have? That you can have one of these sheds, it could be a shack, or you can, for storage, or utility building?
We, we will still treat our accessory buildings like the ones you see at little pre-built. So, we will still treat that as accessory building, but we will also now add that shipping containers can only be allowed in the B1, they'll have to follow the setbacks, all that stuff, of the accessory use, uh, standards of the ordinance.
Why would we do that?
That was when we discussed this about 45 minutes yesterday, it's about an hour with the TRC, and we really dove into this and gave it some thought. They wanted an impression that shipping containers are needed in the town, but just not needed in the residential, that we would prefer that the citizens continue using accessory buildings or sheds that's pre-built for residential, allowing shipping containers in the industrial side.
And maybe, maybe that's a question for the planning board.
Right.
How do you guys feel about shipping containers as accessory buildings in residential zoning districts?
Well, it's just like, we allow buildings of certain height, but not of a larger height.
Right.
You're both buildings, they're both high, we say how high they can be. We say how close they can be. We can say what the purpose can be.
Right.
Shipping container, intermodal, same thing, it's not the same as a storage building. They're just not the same. And, and Caps was long digress to say that the appearance of Nashville is important. They've been sized out on us. And I realize, this is his business. He'd like to have them everywhere, and I understand that. But again, as the planning board, we're a regulatory force and con to certain things. We promote things and we don't. But I think they're not the same. They may both be a container, but they're not the same. Building may be a building, but it's height, it's subject to regulation. In this case, the type of storage device is something that I think we have oversight of. And I don't think they're the same. Their look or feel is not the same. That's where Caps was taught and, and expressed, the appearance of Nashville.
Right.
And that's my main thing, they're not even stored shed, they're a shipping container, no matter what you call it. And we're gonna allow shipping containers in residential area, and that's, that's the born decision, not mine, but that is how I see, there is a difference. I'm referring, your question, what's the difference?
Well, it's a building material. I mean, the things you can do with these things, you can make a utility building of any type, it's just made out of steel, instead of out of wood. You could paint it, decorate it, can add lean twos to it, there's all kinds of things that you can use with it, and they make great, great storage buildings. And they're less of a tendency to fall apart than things made out of wood and bamboo. Uh, probably hold on, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, my goodness, yes.
Without doubt. So, questions, uh, questions? Situation like, uh, our developer, Adam Berchwood, this building, this house is where the golf course used to be, uh, it looks like it might be conducive that he could use shipping containers out there.
Right.
Are we allowed to, allow him to do that? Do we have, do we have anything in place that say yes or no for that? That he would have those containers in the backside where it's not being developed, but yet be accessible to, to the front part?
He would probably fall under 1811A, that's already in the ordinance, kinda like what we did with the pod. If you're doing construction, you're allowed to have it. But after 60 days, when the CO has been ready for the completion of the house, you have to go.
Yeah. He can just move it down two, two blocks.
Right, and then when he gets over the whole project, we'll judge it.
Why would that work, like if you had several projects going on, and you had to install it, you have to just leave it where it is until all the projects are done?
Right, yes, sir. If he started on, uh, James Street right here, he can get to six days, and he did five permits for five hours in town, and we're, we're, okay, when all five things are done, and he moves to the next part of it, come back, we apply, we'll do that again.
It's allowed right now.
Right. So, they can do it like in Cardinal Woods, they can do it because of the construction.
And, you know, the way our ordinance is written right now, if, uh, if you're doing a major renovation at your house, you're allowed to have a shipping container during that construction period. And when it's complete and you've got your certificate of occupancy, then you got so many days to get, to move it out. So...
Randy, your experience as a manager, what most of the towns feel about this type of...
Well, I'm, I'm not sure. I'm, you know, like, like Chris Sev, rather shocked to find that, uh, most towns don't have any regulations on them. But how, you know, even having said that, uh, there, there's definitely a need in the business and industrial zoning districts for shipping containers, either being used as a shipping container or a storage unit, permanent or temporary. And, you know, it's just a, a matter of fact, uh, today. But, uh, I would bet the venture, you know, we, we did find Clayton, Town of Clayton has regulations on shipping containers, and they're not allowed in the residential zoning districts, uh, with, beyond a renovation or a new, new construction. And, uh, you know, they, they can serve as a storage unit, but most, some towns don't allow them in the residential zoning districts.
So, we allow them in B1, that keeps them out of the downtown business district?
Yes, sir. And I'll allow them in the highway business district, where you see your Wal-Marts. Your, uh, back here by the rail access, by the operations center, those that I'm, I1, B1, that area, you got some B1 going out towards National Community College, the Camar Building, John Deere, all that stuff out there is I1, B1. So, it's kinda easy to know there's anybody industrial, every industrial areas. And in O and I, you got some that mixed all in within the town, but it's kind of still around businesses and not in the residential.
So, a question for you, Sean, and, and the planning board to think about. If we did have an ordinance that said, "No shipping containers in the residential zoning districts." You can have them in, in the, the B1 and the industrial, uh, and we would permit them as an accessory building. Um, how would we accommodate a business such as Chris's that has shipping containers that they want to put out front by the street or the road for display purposes, so people driving back and forth know, hey, if I want a shipping container, here's a business that sells or leases them, and I, I can give that company a call and see what it's about?
We had put something in the first one that you received in your packet at the door, saying that for people that are into sales of shipping containers, they can be permitted in the front yard, like you can see in a UZ or I1, car like LBJ, but he could not encroach the setback area on the right way. So, as long as he kept them behind the setback line, he could line them up in the front yard because he's in that industrial B1 site, two have them there.
So, just like John Deere has a timeline out front, he could have a container, as long as it doesn't encroach?
Yes, as long as he don't encroach the setbacks on the right, or have them out there in the right way for display.
Chris, you on Body Street now?
Yes, on Body, Railroad, and...
What's that, son, where he is?
He is on I1, but the two sites he has looked at is the hot rod site that's B1, and I still call it Old West Clark, Ass Fly Building, on Cross Street, that is B1.
And ironically, that's, that's where we got the complaint, huh?
Those two locations. She'd keep you there and have them out for sale, long she did.
Yes, sir.
Were there residents, little residents that complained?
It, it was, yes. Mr. James Baker lives over by the elementary school. He came to a council meeting a while back and, and pointed out that, you know, there are shipping containers at those two locations, and, you know, he stated, "It was my understanding that shipping containers were not allowed, uh, in anything but the industrial zoning district." You know, and zoning of our, our, our parcels in town is fairly easy to find out. You just need to go to Nash County GIS and, uh, click on it, and you can, you can put the zoning of any town as an overlay on that aerial photo, and it'll show you what the property's on. Kinda neat, you can see it.
Got a question about the residential. If, um, if it was allowed, and it was aesthetically pleasing, it was okay, it matched, it looked good, they were taking care of it, um, and then all of a sudden, uh, they just, like people talking junk cars in the yard.
Right.
And all of a sudden, it's looking junky, and then how, how, how does that force?
I think then we would have to make a decision to probably send out a notice of violation that states that the shipping container has fallen to disrepair or apply the status. You have X amount of days to either have it removed, or go out and do the necessary repairs to bring it back up to how it was when you first had it perfected.
And you got, you got, um, the laws on tall grass and weeds and, and the other...
Yes, sir.
... degree.
Right.
Recourses be a civil court. They don't apply here.
Now we're in a court.
Right, and what we would do is just keep putting fines on it, Tuesday they remove it, repair it, or the town signs, find an injunction with the attorney and take the action, and make them bring it up, go over.
And you, you could have an ordinance that allows shipping containers as an accessory use, or permit them as an accessory building, uh, in the residential zoning district. Uh, right now, our zoning districts are limited to the number of accessory buildings they can have. They can't occupy more than a certain percent of the lot. So, you can't fill your entire backyard with accessory buildings, or in this case, shipping containers. Uh, there are, there are limits, if, if they were allowed, and if we permitted them as accessory structures.
The ordinance now states that for every accessory building you have, we look at the gross square feet of your house, and that's how we determine the threshold when you max out. So, right now, when people have three or four in there, they're all over there, their grandfather's in their mass capacity, but they couldn't add no more. But if you got one, and you want to add another, we have to take that square footage, plus this square footage, and see if that is half of your square footage of your house. If it's under, you're allowed to have it, and stop until you can have it.
And doesn't that act on tax base if they do that, if it's treated as an accessory?
It should.
It should.
It should. You know, if a shipping container, if you have an ordinance that allows a shipping container in a residential area as an accessory use, or as an accessory building, it should increase the taxable value of that property. increase the taxable value of that property, and they should pay taxes on it. Now, I don't know if it would come down to, does it have a permanent foundation or not a permanent foundation, sometimes that's the question.
So, but Randy, at this point, we do not have said ordinance for that, right?
Do not, no, no, no. All, all we have in the ordinance right now, it's a shipping container can be used if you're doing a major renovation at your house or building a new one, in any zoning district.
There, there should contain this, nine feet high?
Yes, sir.
And figure it wide?
It is.
Nine and a half is tall.
According definition, it is.
That's, that's max, the dimensions, that's, that's listed, it's not max.
Yeah, yeah, eight feet wide. Yeah, that's eight, eight and a half is standard, nine and a half is a high.
And it can be as long as forty feet.
Eight feet wide.
Eight feet wide, or eight and a half feet, nine and a half feet high, it can be such as twenty feet or forty feet.
And those are standard, those are, there are some longer, but generally speaking, you know.
And they all melt, right?
Yes, sir.
You know, and back to your question, you know, if, if they were painted the same color, house can kept neat and attractive, um, if you were inclined to adopt an ordinance that did allow them in residential zoning areas as an accessory use or as an accessory building, you'd wanna make sure you put language to that effect in there.
Because my concern is, just like the, the park, the park thing, if we're not specific enough, they're gonna find ways around that, in that neighborhood where they get that. So, my concern is with that and ordinance, uh, for residential use, I don't, I don't know that we are ready to move forward with that, because without, without said ordinance, Randy and Sean, I just don't know that we are ready to move forward with, with that type of, um, you know, we're moving forward, allowing it in residence, you know, in residential areas, sure. Because, I mean, they were, it looks to me like over half of their yard is a park, but you know.
I, I, I've seen them out, about riding through the county and, and other counties north of here, I've seen some placed strategically in good taste, painted with a lean twos, I mean, they had it looking nice as well as the rest of their layout, but then I've seen others look like it just, they dropped it off, but then you look at the whole layout and it fits right in, so it just, it, it, it's standards of, of which is acceptable, who are not acceptable.
And you see those, you, you see those that were in the shipping yards in Detroit and Chicago that somebody painted graffiti all over, somebody bought that and they got put in their yard, and they haven't bothered painting it yet.
Well, well, it was somewhere in here where they had properly painted, I believe, it was Mr. Sanders. So, I guess there's a number of questions, we've got kind of three options, we take TRC recommendation as written, or we make recommendations, we take Mr. Sanders as written, or make recommendations to it, we table this, but our recommendation is Sean to bring us one back next month with some of his comments. And, and if we do that, we table this, if he has thoughts of what we wanna do in ordinance wise, if we need to help, which one of these we want to table it to, would be my suggestion.
That's right, yes, sir.
And it gives you time to talk to your constituents, your neighborhoods, your friends, your family, and just ask them, what are your thoughts on shipping containers in residential zoning districts?
But what came in last night is not what I looked at weeks ago, this is much more comprehensive.
Yes, sir.
And so, a lot of that came from, uh, me talking to people when I was, businesses and stuff like this, emergency provision, that, that, that came from a business owner who had that situation happen, and I said, "I hadn't thought about that."
Yeah. Well, one thing regarding an emergency, the, the mayor can declare town-wide emergency and suppress some of the ordinary ordinances that people normally have to follow, you know, if we get a, we get a cap for a hurricane come through here, we're gonna probably lose every tree in town, and, uh.
Use every container we can get our hands on.
And, and so, I mean, you, you gotta relax, some of the nuisance ordinances in cases like that, or you're just gonna compound the problem and aggravate a bad situation.
So, Cal, we got at least three things we can do, so, uh, if I was just now with you, what y'all wanna do?
If I may, I don't know if this is correct, or if this is the time to do so, but I would make the recommendation that we table it until we have a ordinance for residential, and gives us longer time to chat with our constituents, to Renice, and other people, um, about, you know, the thoughts on, on shipping containers in residential areas, like I said, I think it's fine in industrial areas, or business area, but I think it would give us longer time to, um, have some conversation and talk to other people. That's my recommendation, or I would actually make a motion for that, if this is retired to the social.
I think it's, 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 containers have been around for a long time, but what we're looking at is rel- relatively new, and, and so we're sort of kinda like Clayton would be eye ears into determining how to regulate these, but yet be, uh, accepting or be, uh, 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 what's the word?
Accommodating.
Accommodating, that's right, because those pictures do well, man, I mean, they were very, I mean, that was an excellent taste, I mean, that, that was ingenuity there to implement any containers into that home structure like that, um, I think the biggest is we're, we're scared that we're opening up a can of worms, but maybe there are no worms there, if we do it right.
You don't limit somebody's vision or creativity to be able to use something like that, in good taste.
Yeah, that's wrong. But then on the flip side, I don't wanna be the neighbor that looks at something every day, and it's piled over my fence, and it looks like what it is.
Looks like brush.
A junk container.
Brush.
So, again, that's the bounce we gotta find, uh, Randy or, or the, uh, planning board.
Yes, sir.
As we talk to people, are we allowed to push ideas you draft orders, or we have to come back to do that?
Yes, sir, you are allowed to send anything through email, this is by the quasi judicial format, it's legislated, you can have discussion with your neighbors, constituents, family and friends amongst each other, if you call just, you know, I wanna discuss this about off with you, whenever you have your ideas, just send them our way, and we will continue to work on this, and have you something ready for residential in the July planning board meeting, and I take it for commercial.
But when is that meeting, Sean?
That is on July.
Sixteenth of the council meeting.
Council sixteenth, you guys will meet on July the twenty ninth, uh, this is state of the council on their August fifteenth.
Twenty ninth, twenty eighth. Is it twenty ninth or twenty eighth of August?
It is the twenty ninth, the one, hold on, no, excuse me, we got five things, it's the twenty second, the first comes in on Tuesday, July twenty second.
On the twenty second.
Twenty second, it's twenty second, I need to dial everybody, let me see, twenty second. We can look at another date.
Uh, let me do this, uh, we'll come up with a date, but I have a motion from Ms. Lewis, table this for purpose of speaking with the constituents, looking at what she believes the board can come up with, especially the ordinance, if it serves the options of allowing it, that it is technically required to be non-offensive or lease, not created to other properties, what I'm hearing, especially my Mr. Strickland, uh, discussions can have, any more discussion about table? Then the motions, and we'll discuss, when is can be tabled too, but, uh, with, with Chris's information.
Yes, sir.
We can certainly take this, push things that we like back to the order, we take things from the TRC we like, and we find out our own things we feel like add or subtract. Uh, so that is the motion discussion I'm hearing, is anybody counter to what I just said? Or will you vote? Those who call for all the favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, give me a table this, for purpose of trying to come out with a resolution to agree up with, it's all, uh, Jack, it doesn't work for job, it's your meeting, hold on, don't, she's, I know she can't, people, I'll send my ideas in, I'll show her, everybody else, I'm gone.
That is it, bye, Mr. Chairman.
If you're polled availability for those two dates, the twenty second, I guess, if you're polled availability, and mark me absent, and if we don't have a forum, then maybe we can be there.
Okay, yes, sir.
You'll find out what we got.
I'll send out to the board in the morning, you just reply back which day, which you would vote to choose.
Like you said, this board is capable of handling everything, so just see if we got a forum on the twenty second, if not, we'll find a date then, it pulls a call.
Yes, sir.
No further business, our meeting's closed.